Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask for is agenda changes.
No changes to present from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll now open up for public forum if anybody's here wishing to address the council. Seeing only the newspaper in the gallery, I'm going to assume nobody's here for that, so we'll go ahead and close the public forum, move on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda submitting, trusting that each of us here has read it and there are no questions or discussion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Same sign, the consent agenda passes. We've got one item under unfinished business and that's Parks and Recreation bleachers purchase. I don't see Mr. Williams here tonight, so Ethan will let us know where we're at on that.
Yeah, um, basically, we have the updated quotes there. You should have the handouts, just showing that they're still valid as far as we had the quote through dates on both of those. Again, we're seeking approval to do this as a project because of the concrete work as far as the slab and then for to add to the accessibility to the area connecting basically the bleachers by sidewalk from the existing sidewalk kind of over there by the pool and then pouring some basic ADA pads that could be used as well as the bleachers themselves. Don't have any accessible seating since they have step ups. So again, the quotes, the very similar, very similar build. The SOPA quote though is approximately 10% cheaper than the Heartland quote. And if we time it, or this should be coming in on the lead time and where Public Works could potentially do the installation, that would knock that down about another 10%. So that's kind of what I have. I think, again, nothing, nothing substantial has changed from Grant's presentation last, last meeting, so.
If no one has any questions, I'd motion to set the budget not to exceed $40,000 to purchase bleachers and necessary concrete work at the softball diamond and authorize staff signatures as necessary to complete the purchase.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept this project for the bleachers at the softball diamond. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries and finishes up our unfinished business. We'll move on to new business. First item is, is we need to set a public hearing notice for the revenue neutral rate.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Um, actually, uh, we, you, via resolution, excuse me, 2022-09, you've already set the revenue neutral rate, public hearing date, D, September 12th. So this, we are giving authority to basically publish that budget summary and it provides notice of both hearings. Well, I'm going to get that in the paper this week and that would allow us to have both revenue neutral rate hearing as well as the budget public hearing on September 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. It just sets a top mill rate at 75.447. Again, the council is free to adopt a mill rate lower than that, but you cannot adopt one higher than that once that's published without republishing. And that hearing date will keep us compliant with state guidelines regarding timing. And the notice will also be published on the city's website, also in compliance with state law, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd make a motion to set public hearing for the proposed 2023 budget for the city of Hallstead on Monday, September 12th, 2022 at 7:00 PM and authorize publication of required public notice for the revenue neutral rate and budget public hearing as well as the proposed 2023 budget summary.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this public hearing for the revenue neutral rate and the budget. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. That motion carries. Next, under new business, K-Camp Annual Meeting Voting Delegate.
We are members of K-Camp and so we can participate in that annual meeting that they have. It's essentially the, the caveat there is because of the way their bylaws are structured with K-Camp, that has to be a member of the governing body, so you can't delegate it to a staff member. So one of you all, if you want to attend that K-Camp annual meeting, I don't believe we've heard if there's a virtual option yet from there, but basically of us designating who can vote on any subsequent changes to the inter-local agreement with K-Camp on behalf of the city of Hallstead. And if no one's designated, I believe it just will default to who it was the previous year. But again, if none of you can attend and do realize that it's a one night meeting in, in Kansas City, you know, we can possibly forego because there's not a proxy option either, so.
Who was our last delegate? I think it was me and I attended virtually. Denise?
You and Denise. If I'm, I'd like to propose that we keep the same delegates, an alternate this year as we had last time if anybody's doesn't have any issue with that. With that being the case, I'd make, make a motion to approve Mayor Travis as voting delegate and Denise Clausen as alternate delegate for the K-Camp annual meeting.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve the delegates for the K-Camp annual meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Congratulations to me and Denise. Next item under new business is upcoming grant opportunities. Ethan must have found some stuff he wants to tell us about.
Yeah, so under the infrastructure grant or the infrastructure bill that passed, they basically put out a call. This is on the hazard mitigation grants. Excuse me, let me pull up the, here, but essentially there's funds available to help basically, you know, prepare similar grant opportunity we use to fund the new storm sirens. We've talked a little bit about the need, you know, to update like the restrooms at Riverside Park as far as by the ball fields. There's been discussion of getting, you know, building out at Williams Park. One of our mitigation items were community safe rooms or storm shelters. Essentially, this would, this would be a mechanism to fund a building of that sort. They would be limited in size, obviously meant to basically if there were soccer games going on or baseball games going on, you know, that the people there have an immediate safe room to go to, but you can essentially build them. Other communities have done this to, you know, include restrooms and things, so it will have a dual purpose. Obviously, we will have your responsibility. You can't just turn it into a storage room that you're chucking everything out of when the disaster happens. They're not necessarily the most aesthetically pleasing buildings. I mean, they're concrete bunkers basically to meant with holds, high, high winds, that kind of mitigation for that severe weather. Anyway, it's a way for us to maybe look at, it's similar to our last with most of these federal grants, you know, you, you file letters of intent first. They review that. If they like your letter of intent, you know, kind of think the project's worthwhile, then you go to the next phase. So nothing obligates us to pursue this, but just wanted to get feedback from you all if this is something you want to pursue. Again, it might allow us to kill some birds with one stone and this is actually on our mitigation plan for the city. So that helps strengthen the application on the forefront. This isn't, you know, we're, we're picking a mitigation method that hasn't already been identified for our community or coming out of left field. But just thought I'd throw that out there because that money is going to be made available very, very soon and.
Sounds like a no brainer to me.
Yeah.
Would be good to get some infrastructure out there at the Williams Park also, if that's what we want to do, a storm shelter.
Yeah.
Just keep growing the infrastructure out there when we can.
Yep.
And like Josh says, it's, it's an easy one.
We know how these grants have worked out for us with the fire department.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's always good to pursue it.
Yep.
Relocate, put it in between the, I mean, we could relocate it over there.
Yep.
Yeah.
And I think there's, I mean, that's before I went and invested, I mean, my goal is hopefully we can talk to him too about, you know, like what's the possibility of putting porch areas or, you know, that kind of thing to make them a little aesthetically more.
Already thinking about it.
Good to the eye and not, I mean, I think as long as the box holds, it, it should be okay as far as what it's trying to mitigate.
Well, even if that's something we had to pay for on our own.
Yeah.
You know, we could do that later, maybe.
So.
Yeah, I'd talked to Ethan a little bit about these. These are mostly 75, 25 grants, right?
Yeah.
So it could be pretty good for us.
Yeah.
So, do you have your consensus, Mr. City Manager?
Yep, I'll pursue it.
There you go. More, more stuff for you to work on. Well, that finishes up our agenda under new business. We do have one executive session on the agenda tonight and I would entertain the motion for that now or very shortly.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Hallstead City Council recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss pending litigation pursuant to the consultation with an attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA 754319B2. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, the city manager and city attorney. The open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at 7:40 PM.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to enter into executive session. All in favor say aye.
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 Same sign. We are going to move to executive session.
We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize an expenditure not to exceed $10,000 for real estate reclamation.
Second.
Have the motion and the second to approve $10,000 for a real estate reclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. That motion carries. Now we'll move on to the report section of the agenda and I'll start with governing body comments. I'll start with you tonight Derek.
Uh, no comments.
Okay. Josh?
Nope.
George?
What a great old settlers it was. Gosh, it was just everything looked so nice around here. Thank you everybody that was involved.
My only issue with old settlers is it was, it was a little warm. Other than that, it was great.
Well, don't you know that that's the mayor's job to get that order in for the weather?
It didn't rain.
I just want to echo George Sodiment, or Sodiments. It was a great old settlers. I know that the old settlers committee is kind of a thankless job and, but at least from this citizen, it was a great weekend and appreciate everybody's efforts for getting it all put together.
So I'd also echo George and Denise's comments. A huge thank you to the old settlers committee and the volunteers for all the work they put into that. It was a great weekend.
Okay, let's move on to the city manager report and when you're done with that, you can just roll into the financial reporting.
All right. Uh, starts off, Nysley has finished putting plans together to offer curbside recycling to those residents who would wish to have it. Uh, the monthly cost will be $12.60 for bi-weekly service with one cart. Uh, I believe the proposed pickup days, when last we heard is Monday. That's uh, subject to change. Uh, but they do plan to begin offering that after October 1st. Uh, just note that this does not replace the trash service currently billed out with monthly utility bills from the city. Um, and also note that residents will need to contact Nysley directly. Uh, if they're interested in starting recycling services, um, and arrange that with Nysley and then that they will be billed directly by Nysley for that service, not the city. Uh, there is information on the city's Facebook page currently. An informational sheet will go out with next month's utility bills and then residents can also visit Nysley's website, uh, to get in contact with them. Public Works responded to both the rotor failure at the wastewater treatment plant and a water main break over by Kim Street in the past couple of weeks. Uh, both issues have been resolved and I just want to commend Public Works on handling those issues on top of all the work they were handling related to old settlers. Superintendent Adams and I attended the latest Public Wholesale Water Supply District Number 17 Board Meeting. A new draft operating agreement has been worked out between the representatives on the board and has been recommended for approval by the member cities of the district. Holst, or a joint meeting of the governing bodies was suggested as the best way to allow all the cities to discuss the proposed updates and potentially take action for approval. And a tentative date for that meeting, uh, is Thursday, November 3rd. Uh, has been suggested. I would just ask all of you to look at your calendars and see if November 3rd will work, uh, as a potential date because we need to find, um, where we can at least have a quorum of our governing body there and then we're gonna need to set that as a special meeting for the governing body. Um, and it's, if we're looking months out, it's because we're trying to get four governing bodies together in one, one time and place. So please, look at your calendars for that week and we'll have that on a agenda. Uh, Engineer Fouracre continues working on both the Cedar Meadows second Powers Property subdivision phase and the Ninth and Walnut improvements. Uh, the city continues to wait for KDHE approval on the sanitary sewer plans for the housing addition, but work has started in permitting the low water crossing from Main Street at the SLU. While we wait for that approval, uh, the survey of the Ninth and Walnut area has been completed as of last week and that information will begin the process of informing the design plans, uh, for the water main replacement, upsizing and the eventual street repairs. So hopefully we will have some finalized designs before too long on Ninth and Walnut. Uh, just wanted to take a minute to thank all the volunteers of the old settlers committee and the local business community for their support and efforts with this year's old settlers celebration. Uh, weekend was a great showcase for the community and it's not possible without the time, talents and dedication that everyone involved puts into making that event happen. So just big thank you to everyone involved. After a slight delay due to illness, the summer musical sponsored in part, uh, by Hallstead Parks and Recreation was also held over this last weekend with two performances. It's great participation from the community and as always, thanks to Claire Clifford for the work she does with this annual event. Two reminders for annual meetings, uh, to close out my report here. First is Harvey County Economic Development Council's annual meeting, which will be on August 31st, from 11:30 to 1:00 PM in Newton at the Meridian Center. Uh, Jeremy Hill of WSU's Center for Economic Research and Business Development, uh, is the featured speaker and that event is free. So if you want to attend, just let Julie Ari know so we can RSVP for you. And then the League of Kansas Municipalities Annual Conference is October 8th through 10th in Overland Park and early registration discounts end this Friday. So if any governing body member is interested in attending that conference, uh, just please again, reach out to Julie or myself and we'll get you registered and make the necessary accommodations for your attendance there. And then just wanted to note that I will be attending some K, KMGA meetings in Overland Park and so we'll be out of the office this Thursday and Friday at those. So. That is all for my manager's report. If there's any questions, if not, uh, financial reports briefly, you have the, uh, budgeted funds, fund summary through the end of July. The treasures report was in the consent agenda. And, uh, then you also have our city equipment and capital improvement fund totals there. Uh, just, continue to see ourselves in a, in relatively better cash position across, uh, most funds. Um, some slight, uh, unfavorableness in the general fund. Um, and then the, uh, library fund, some of that's just due to timing of when we did our transfer to the library last year, uh, versus this year. But overall, we're in a better cash position across all funds. Uh, their expenditures are roughly running about 10% less, uh, than anticipated. So just again, commend the department heads on watching expenditures so far through the year, especially in light of rising costs. Um, we are of course still continuing to see, uh, some delays with supply chain issues and so we have some encumbrances that just haven't hit the budget yet in terms of purchases. Uh, we'll note, uh, the new public works struck that you all approved a couple of months ago finally, uh, came in and, and is done. So it's sitting out there, on Third Street if you want to look at that. But overall, we're. I will note the new public works struck that you all approved a couple of months ago finally came in and is done, so it's sitting out there on Third Street if you want to look at that. But overall, we're in good shape. I know I gave you a lot of financial information and related to budget, budget discussions and whatnot, so I don't want to bore you with going over the same details, but we're, as of the end of July, still in very good shape for the year. Revenues are at or slightly above where we would expect to see them, and expenditures are holding steady, so.
Good deal. Any questions for Ethan's financial report? If not, we have concluded our agenda, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.